...of the public on agenda items only. Remarks of the public on agenda items only.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I have one agenda, but I know it's on there. The paper decision for two thousand and five.
I'm sorry.
The property that we're going to be offering tonight at approximately a hundred and fifty dollars. And I was here wondering how it fit in the category of an emergency thing, because it's definitely not a safety issue. And I stayed here at the city hall to find out why it was put as an emergency issue and not at first reading to give other people who might have been interested in that property a chance to maybe make an offer or do something with it. But I see it put as an emergency, and I was wondering, why is this? Why is it such an emergency? The other thing is, the other two things are also put as emergencies. And I don't see how selling a plot of land is emergency. I don't know how it fits in. It's an emergency situation. And everything that seems to come to the council is always emergency. And I think we had this discussion two years ago. But everything coming up here and the council was here was kind of like saying there shouldn't be so many emergency things. But now today, on our agenda, there's three emergency things. And I just want to know what emergency does this deal? I was told that the reason that the house that's being sold for a hundred and fifty dollars property is an emergency because we can get somebody to cut the grass. Is that an emergency? I think is my question. And why, I think, I ask people about the emergency.
Thank you very much.
Omae's. I too have some trepidation and concerns in reference to that, to thirty-nine fourteen, forty-two fourteen, and forty-three fourteen. And I will echo and con-sign what Mr. Struggler just indicated. There is nothing on this agenda constituted an emergency. And I think that we are abusing the emergency clause. When the thing does arise that it should be emergency, then we'll look at it differently. So you have on here talking about side lots and you're selling it only for a dollar, I mean a hundred and fifty dollars. Secondly, I have a problem with that. If we are going to rebuild our city, we must start building and holding some of this land that has been cleared for redevelopment and not just putting everything as a side lot because it's beside somebody's house or whatever. Some of these lots are buildable. And I would employ this council and this administration to visit other cities. And one in particular, I will point out, is California. And there's other places where people are building houses all upside mountains and everywhere else, and some of them are so close you can't even see through them. And we are hollering, oh, we, it's unbuildable. Cleveland is building, and we are sitting on dead center doing absolutely nothing. No rehabilitation is taking place in the city. And I will leave the podium. I see that the law director have arrived. Then he should be sitting in the seat, not an employee as the city administration. It is the law director, the finance director, and service director. Supposedly sitting in for the mayor. I don't care whether he's absent or otherwise or in the city. Those are the persons, and that's the charter, and no one up here can change that, except us.
Standing well, thank you. Moving right along, is there any other remarks from the public? If not, we will move on. And I, it is true that the law director has just entered the room. So, Mr. Law Director, would you please, are you here for the mayor?
No, I think the chief of staff is there indeed.
Chief of staff, chief captain, do it. You have to do it.
Mr. Law Director, is that your opinion that, is that your opinion that he should be there?
I understand, I understand what the code says, but there's nothing to prevent the chief of staff from commenting in the mayor's instance.
Well, at this point in time, please, Mr. Resident, refrain from speaking until you are permitted to speak and ask, you just got through knowing that. So, Mr. Director Riley, who you are the law director, so for the sake of argument.
Please, please make this chair.
Please.
I honestly think of the remarks of the mayor.
Couldn't we just make a motion?
No, we don't need a motion.
My gosh, it's just a chair.
It's just a chair.
That's all it is.
That's it.
That's okay. The mayor, in case like the address, didn't any marching orders?
Thank you. I appreciate you.
More than just a chair.
Would you please?
No, no, please, read the terms.
Omae.
Mr. Omae's. Mr. Omae's, we understand that you are back here, and we appreciate to have your attendance. We missed it very much. But would you please refrain from giving remarks?
I have no problem with that, Madam President, but I have a problem not following the law, what the law indicates.
Thank you, then you speak at that time. All right. Moving right along, minutes to be approved?
Madam Chairman, I move that the personal appointments committee meeting dated August twenty-sixth, twenty-fourteen. Minutes be approved.
Discussion? During none?
Counselor King?
Yeah.
Counselor Baker? Counselor Martin?
Yay.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yeah.
Counselor Thomas?
Yeah.
Carries conduct it and scheduling. Reports and announcements from the mayor, whomever is sitting in for him, that he has given the effect yield.
I will be giving the reports and announcements of the mayor.
Thank you. Would you stand up and do that for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Want me to come to the mic, or you want me to?
Doesn't matter.
Okay. So I just want to make a few announcements, and I want to address some concerns about the land that's being purchased. Just announcement, the repaving of North Taylor and Alphacent is taking place. They've begun the repaving of those two streets. North Noble will begin spring of two thousand and fifteen. Rescheduling sixteen demolitions throughout the city of East Cleveland. And there's another fifteen by the county land bank before the end of the year. About the emergency legislation. It is the council's prerogative to determine whether or not the legislation put before them is an emergency, and they well within their rights to amend the legislation. We put it in emergency, especially for the structure, because it's vacant and abandoned. And we know what happened last spring in vacant and abandoned houses, where we found bodies of young ladies in those houses. The city doesn't normally take in structures, but in some cases we have, and we've done that. And this structure, we want to get out of the land bank. Don Durro, who's been doing appraisals on property in this city well before this administration has begun, does all of these appraisals. The value of these properties are based on the market value that exists in this community. And that appraisal was done by a professional in Don Durro, who has been working with the city well before this administration has taken place. So if you see a value of a hundred and fifty dollars, that is the value that a state-certified appraiser has given on that property. If you see a structure selling, it is because that structure has been valued based off a professional appraiser. Moreover, we try and dispense with all of the properties that are in the land bank, especially those that are next to people currently who've been, for the last five or ten years, cutting the lawns. And now we own the property, and they want to purchase the property. And the Neighbor Next Door program outlines that with a piece of legislation that was passed several years ago. And it sets the value of the property in the Neighbor Next Door legislation. And that is the process by which people are going through. Other properties, such as the Hillsborough property, that property was given a value by an appraiser. And if people want to buy those properties, I'll give you the perfect example. The Oak Hill property was appraised. It went through the process. The applicant gave the appraised value for it. Everyone said that there's a hundred people coming to buy the property. They need to let the property sit for a while. The property was denied to that applicant, and it is currently vacant and abandoned. And there are no bids on that property. So if the Hillsborough property is the same way, if we stop this piece of property, there is no people coming to bid on that property. People say that, hey, we're offering this, we're offering that. It does not exist. Oak Hill is the prime example of property that has no value, and people are not bidding on it. And when an individual does, it is council's prerogative to determine the disposition of. So I just wanted to respond to the remarks of the resident to give people an understanding of what the, how property sales happen in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Let the record be quiet that the mayor has entered the room. Mayor, is there any more remarks that seem to be set up here?
My step is a tough act of the boss.
Well, I'm sure you could have did that. The head of the house, okay? Moving right along, receipts. I'm sorry. Confirmation of appointment?
I'm working diligently with Mr. Omae. I'm working with Mr. Omae on that. And we're working with Counselor King. He's in the process of finding some CAC appointments. So we're hoping to get this on next month's agenda, as soon as we have some more appointments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Receipts and communications and petitions. Are there any?
You have it in front of you. It's to the family of.
That's a confirmation.
Okay.
This is a, from the city of East Cleveland, Office of the Council letter of condolences to the family of Ms. Helen T. Bell, who was not only a friend of mine, she was my neighbor for many, many years. Her kids grew up with mine. The East Cleveland City Council would like to take the time to extend our condolences to your family concerning the recent loss of your loved one. Helen T. Bell, beloved wife, for thirty-five years of Bell to T. Bell Senior deceased. Dear mother of two sons, one daughter, the deceased refugee, and one daughter Denzel. Cherish aunt, sister, cousin, and friend. For the sake of time, I will read last paragraph. Encourage you to remember that God's grace is sufficient to see you safely through difficult times. He knows the depth of your loss and his grief, and great love is freely given to each of you. For comfort and support, his promise to all of his children is that he will never leave you or forsake you. Our prayers are with your family. On behalf of the East Cleveland City Council, with love and sympathy. I also must state with sympathy for the family of Ms. Gladys Walcott. She lost her son the other week. And she is now in Atlanta with her family. Her son, who battled fiercely for his life, succumbed. And she is down there. And I would like all of us to give prayer and thanks for his long life that she did have with him. You want to take a moment of silence to do that, because she was one of us? Yes, sir.
Can we add to that, too, Mr. Omae's nephew is gone. So I'd like to add something toward that situation, too.
Mr. Omae, if you have a nephew from here or where you are, that can be added to our prayers and our rest in this moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. Moving right along. Bids, are there any? Legislation?
I'm sorry.
Reports on council committees. Councilman King?
Thank you, Vice President. We met last week with these students from Case and outlined a number of things for them to look at so far as the city ordinance and other ordinances to help bring our ordinances up to date and examine if there's any areas or opportunities to increase the revenue through ordinance. And we did our last food pantry last Friday, the two Fridays ago.
Is that it?
That's the food Friday.
Thank you, Mr. King. Counselor Martin?
Yes, Madam Chairman. I rise and just briefly speak of the personal appointment committee. We met August twenty-sixth, and we approved a policy procedure handbook for the entire council in our office, something we haven't done. I want to thank everyone sitting at this table for helping that about. We spent months going back and forth, tweaking it, and getting everybody's input. So now we have policies, procedure handbook for the council office. Madam Chairman, that concludes our call.
Thank you, Counselor Martin. Counselor Vice President, Thomas Wheeler?
Moving everyone. We had a health and safety meeting last week. And that was, we department's chief. And to the mayor and his administration, they're doing a fabulous job. They've added new vehicles to the lineup, also a couple SUVs, and also bicycles. They got six bike patrol officers out. And that's being paid through a grant that we have. So it's been wonderful. The police jail cells were inspected by the health department, and they passed, something they haven't done in almost twenty years. But they've been painted and cleaned up and fixed up. So, great job, great job. And the fire department has received two rescue squads added to their lineup. So the streets are being patrolled and being protected, and you being serviced by a great group of people. And that concludes my question now.
Thank you, Counselor. As Chair of the Finance Committee, I've been meeting with the auditors, and I've met with the three auditor management employees. And we had meetings about ATS. And you know, or you don't know, ATS is the traffic lights out here. And it was found that ATS was a little slow on paying their part on the revenue. I met with the, the Alina and Tish. And we sat down and talked to them about the revenue. And it seems that our former finance director asked for an advance last year and received that advance. Therefore, there is no money, there will be no revenue that will be coming to us until the end of the year in December. Also, we have the collection agency that is supposed to be doing the collections of the monies from the traffic. We're having some difficulties bringing them in to discuss how much money they have collected, how much is there, and so forth and so on. We're supposed to be meeting again to talk to the collection agency, but I think that we're going to have some difficulties. And I think that our law director will be handling that. Also, the monies that is really being made from the traffic is being made by our police. Our police are out there breaking them, but, I'm sorry. They're doing their job, and that is the revenue that is coming in from the traffic. Also, when the gentleman from ATS was here, it was discovered that we have nine areas of traffic lights out there. And only three of those traffic ATS lights are working and bringing in revenue. There's a lot going on, and I don't want, I'm always trying to keep a positive attitude about everything that is happening. And in talking to the chief of staff, he has a positive attitude about what is going on. But I wanted to remark about the emergency, the legislation here. I think basically what has taken place is the fact that it was so, the legislation from the previous years was stagnant, and they were held up in committees. But that is not happening now. So we don't really need to deal with so many emergencies. And we will address that, not because somebody said there's no need for emergency, because in some instances, there are, there is a need for emergencies. But I think basically, the reason that so many come down in the emergency factor is the previous years, they got hung up, and you'd have to almost get emergency to bring them down. So again, this council will be looking to see and evaluate what is emergency and what is not. Also, as far as the unbuildable, that came through a former councilwoman who felt that if you took care of the property and it was not viable, that you couldn't build a house on it. And they wanted to buy it, the person that had been taking care of that. That legislation was brought forth, and the entire council approved that legislation. So having said all that, I will now say that is the extent of my report at this time. There is going to be a commission meeting on the twenty-third of this month at the library. And I encourage all residents to come to that meeting so that you can hear the financial status of your city. And it will be at eleven a.m. in the morning on the twenty-third. Please try to attend. It is most important that you come and hear from your auditors and with documentation. That is the extent of my, oh, and Ward Two will be having their ward meeting on the last Monday of the month. I'm thinking that's the twenty-ninth. Thank you. Madam Chair, legislation, please.
Ordinance number thirty-nine dash fourteen. An ordinance amended section one of five point zero four A of the codified ordinance of the city of East Cleveland, authorizing the disposition of unimproved, nonproductive, residential vacant side yard lots adjacent to homeowner occupied lots for the sum of one hundred dollars, and declaring an emergency for the public health.
This legislation is sponsored by Councilman Manziel Baker. Councilman Baker is not here at the present time. Somebody else want to take that? Who else is on that, who want to take the committee?
Counselor Wheeler and yourself.
Councilman Vice President, really want to? Deal with that at this present time, since Councilman Baker is not present?
So it's really allowing us to sell the lot, adjoining lot, to the neighbor if it's unbuildable for a fee of a hundred bucks? I mean, basically self-explanatory. An ordinance, codified ordinance of the city of East Cleveland, authorizing disposition of unimproved, nonproductive residential vacant side lots adjacent to homeowner occupied lots for a sum of a hundred dollars.
So are you sponsoring this?
Yes.
And you are moving?
We're moving to, try to motion on.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Is there a discussion? Yes, sir.
Yes. I, I think the point that the citizens made about emergency is a valid point. You alluded to it. And I don't think two weeks is going to make that much of difference. I can't vote for this because all government is predicated on process and procedure. But we have to follow the process and procedure. So I'm not opposed to thirty-nine fourteen, and it is merit, forty-two fourteen is merit, or forty-three fourteen, but it's really not an emergency. This land has been sitting there for a long time, two weeks, and not going to make that big a difference. So my feeling, and I was thinking about it as it was alluded to by the citizens, the proper thing to do is to, it is not an emergency. So unless it's amended, I can't move on, because it's not the proper thing to do. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Vice President.
I also thank you.
I would like to comment on thirty-nine fourteen. If I'm not mistaken, this was amending it so that the side lot would not be limited to a certain size. And before, I think it was limited to a certain size. So it expands that size so that residents can acquire the property without having to have an appraisal done for two hundred and fifty or more dollars and the land's only worth a hundred dollars. In regards to emergency or non-emergency, as, as we move this city forward, we need, we need to think forward. There's no reason for this to be an emergency. But as you look at the codified ordinance, there's no reason for it not to be an emergency. If you read something this week, and then you reread it in two weeks, and then it becomes law in a month, how long is that? The city has to then, during that time, has to maintain that land. Let's, let's get this land out of the city possession. And for the record, and everyone's here, including the law director, the land bank list goes out. People submit applications on that property. Once the administration and the land building department approves an applicant, that part of the process is closed. So you can't, after it's appraised, you can't then go out and try to market the property for more money. If that part's already done, there's no point in letting this go two months, right? The emergency is not really an emergency. It's due to our ordinance that it has a re-emergency so that it's expedited as quickly as possible. After it's an emergency, it's seven days, and then it becomes law, and then it becomes their property, as opposed to two weeks, then another reading, and then thirty days. That's almost two months. We can do this. We can move this city forward at a faster pace than two months of piece of legislation. Thank you.
Basically, I agree with my counsel. I agree that why would you? And I am one of those that are stickler for policy and procedure. But since it has come down, you have individuals that has come here because they have dealt with the, went through the process, and they have dealt with the appraisal and so forth and so on. I cannot, in all conscience, look out into the audience and say to that individual that I'm going to make you wait for this to do a second reading. I can't do that. But I second, and I just said a couple minutes ago, that we would look, we would take a closer look from now on to determine whether or not it should be placed on here as an emergency. At this point in time, we, it is on here as an emergency. And it looks like we won't have the four votes that you need to pass it as an emergency. So, you have anything to say, Counselor?
No, I just can't.
Yours, sir.
I'm going to reans with the other two counselors here. The process has been so tied up and so long and so tedious that by the time it gets to us, we do the review. It's given a long wait. And I just have more time to it. We got to, we got to, we got to kind of show them more. So I'm just going to one handed pass it through the emergency.
Okay, um, yes, sir.
Just to pile on, I mean, uh, this is the thirty-two day of September. Uh, so there are a couple more weeks left in September. If, if this is done on a non-emergency, nobody, you know, nobody could force anybody changing the mic. It's gonna be fifty days. It's, it's actually, you know, from, from the first reading, it takes forty-five usually, but since there's a little bit more time, it's gonna be fifty days. And, uh, that's almost two months.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, we're ready for the, um, vote.
Councilman Baker, Councilor King?
Yeah.
Councilor Martin?
Nay.
Councilor Wheeler?
Yeah.
Councilor Towns?
Yeah. The, um, deposition of this thirty-nine fourteen fail for the lack of the vote.
Resolution number forty-two dash fourteen, resolution authorizing the mayor to transfer vaccine and feline food at a cost of three hundred and fifty and zero dollars. Permanent parcel number six seven two dash zero six dash zero five two. Declaring an emergency for the public welfare and health and safety.
Um, since, um, Councilman Baker, uh, is not here as a sponsor, my vice president, would you take this for him?
Uh, my understanding is right, it was a resident that wanted to buy the lots over on Elveron. Elveron has had a lot of flooding and things like that going on over there, so we need to move forward and let them leave the lots that they've been trying to take care of.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Discussion? Hearing none?
No, we don't need a discussion, but if I'm correct, the Solandra Walls did say that the lots cost the city approximately twelve hundred dollars a year to maintain, so.
Hearing no more of discussion, uh, Madam, could I call the vote?
Councilor King?
Yeah.
Councilor Martin?
Nay.
Councilor Wheeler?
Yeah.
Councilor Towns?
Yeah. Um, resolution forty-two fourteen fail for the lack of, um, positive vote.
Resolution forty-three dash fourteen, resolution authorizing the mayor to transfer to Leon Woods doing business as X Enterprise at a cost of three hundred and fifty dollars and no cents. A parcel of land held by the city is part of its land reutilization program and located at two zero zero five Hillsboro Road, East Cleveland, Ohio, four four one one two. Permanent parcel number six seven three dash fifteen dash zero fifteen. Declaring an emergency for the public welfare, health, and safety.
Sponsor is not here. Uh, my vice president, Wheeler, would you like to take that?
Once again, here's a resident that's trying to do something positive in our city. It's going through the process over and through hoops and everything else, and they would likely obtain this property. I don't see no reason why we shouldn't move forward and pass this as an emergency so they can get access and be responsible for the property, take off the books of the city.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Councilor King?
Yeah.
Councilor Martin?
Nay.
No, there's no, there's no discussion, call for discussion.
Is there a discussion?
No, it's, uh, nothing to discuss. Do you wanna do it again?
Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, uh, we call for the vote.
Councilor King?
Yeah.
Councilor Martin?
Nay.
Councilor Wheeler?
Yeah.
Councilor Towns?
Yeah.
Um, we will now, um, hear remarks and requests of the public.
This may be out of order. We just, I went to another city, I went to another city's meeting, and when they did remarks to the public, they had like a back and forth conversation and, and that flowed a lot better than have all the residents talk and then have us go after that, trying to respond to each and every one of them. And I was wondering if we could amend the agenda to try that, to see how that works.
Not this time. Not this time. We'll try it next time. And I appreciate the fact that you are looking out for any more expeditious way of doing things. I appreciate them very much. It shows your thinking.
Thank you.
At this time, we will also look at this and the emergencies. Proceed.
Amazing, Sixth Rock Road. Thank you, uh, Councilman Martin for calling, uh, the attention to the, of my nephew, the loss of my nephew. What baffles me, it confuses me, and I cannot fathom, and I hope someone can, it just does not speak well for us as a people. We have norms to follow. We have a charter. We have ordinance. And the ordinance, you can amend. The charter, you cannot amend. You cannot. Only the resident can amend that. It says the order of this meeting, it says the order who follows it in the mayor's when he's absent, who sits there, and you're gonna put somebody else there that's just an employee. No reflection on, 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 Mr., uh, Smetly. It is the order. And the law director's a responsibility to interpret that and tell you that is the way the order goes. He knows that, that doesn't matter. It does matter. That's why we have a law director. He is to interpret the law and inform, inform you that is the way. He's supposed to be sitting there, or the finance director's supposed to be there, or the service director. That's moving in the absence of the mayor. And then when you sit here and say, there's no ordinance that regulates, uh, a property and stuff, there is ordinance regulating. And there is nowhere says that there's an ordinance also constitute in the charter as well as ordinance constitute what constitute, constitute an emergency. Land is not no emergency. And you sit up here and you do things that, read. You wanna lead, you can't read. You can't lead if you don't read and to follow the law. And it's, it's, it's sad. And then when I hear what are they saying about us? And then Ferguson, a prime example. And not only that, and even going to what the, the, the ballplayers can't discipline their children. And everybody's in the public media, media, uh, uh, rapping man and the person are being castigated up through the public 'cause he disciplined his child. That's what some of these around here need to be disciplined now. We wouldn't have all this killing. That's who killed my nephew, 'cause nobody hadn't taught that people nothing. They don't, they don't love themselves. They don't love nobody else.
Amen.
It's sad. And then we sit here as a people and then we, how we operate the city. And there, and we doing all the, there's nothing to this city.
And I appreciate your remarks.
Just castigating each other, not doing nothing.
Next.
Good afternoon, Councilman.
Good afternoon.
My name is Jenny Gardner, one thirty-six, twelve Garden Road, Ward three. Is that sufficient? Is something else I should say? I've been here a while. Okay, what I'm here to say is that I have a, a couple, well, uh, concern. And in particular, it's, uh, with the service department, our service department. Uh, on Garden Road, I've been calling the service department and my council member, Mr. Tom Wheeler, off and on since April twenty-fourth, up through as late as August, I'm gonna say twenty, August fourteenth. And what I'm calling about is trying to get, uh, our street passed with all the holes from the bad, this past bad winter we had. All the calls to the service department only got me a request to leave my name and phone number over and over again. I talked to summer students working up there this summer. I talked to, um, the lady in charge of Benetton Hill. She got back and she spoke with me. She assured me she talked to someone. They would call. I left my name and number for about the fifth time. After that, I waited every two weeks to call back 'cause I heard nothing, and I refused to leave my name and number again. But I did leave my name and nothing. I'm no one calling. All I want to ask is what do the residents have to do to get something like the patching? It's been patched all over the city of East Cleveland. I was watching each street get paved. I even saw them pave Manhattan back there along the railroad track from Shaw all the way across where it comes around to Dome. That's an access road to me. I'm not sure. There's no street houses on both sides like Garden is. And Garden is not as long as that street. What was the problem with getting Garden Road passed? And did I do something wrong? Did I use the wrong procedure to try to get this done? And what can I do even at this point to get the street done? They did patch maybe three pop, three little holes at the intersection of Haven and Garden, and then they stopped right there.
Uh, your, your remarks will be, um, answered.
Thank you.
Say good evening to the mayor of Towns, the city of East Cleveland. Uh, my name is Wadell Townsend. I live at sixteen fifty-four Benmore Avenue. I have a few things to bring out to our leaders. What is bad and some is good also. First of all, I want to congratulate our leaders for taking care of some of the grass and picking out some of these houses in this city. Uh, secondly, uh, on Superior, just before you go under the bridge, offer you the, there's Superior. There's a hole there just before you go under the bridge on Superior. It's bigger than this machine there.
It is.
Now, we gotta do something about it. And I know our leaders seen that hole. Just as you go under the bridge, it's right there at the edge of the bridge. Now, we, we should do something about that. Our people's coming in from downtown, and this hole is awful. So I want some of our leaders to go by and look at that, and we try to do something about that. That's bad in our city. Then the next street is, as this lady spoke about, Manhattan and others, Moline is bad. Let's take a look at that and if we can, get over there and do something for that street. I won't ask for too much because I know the city have their hand full. Lot of them are busy and making money elsewhere and counting blessings. So let's look alive and do the thing that most, that we can't do. A lot of these things we can do now. You all know, we can tighten up a little better. Some of the brothers and our leaders got into the new leadership, brought in the darkness to light, and I hopefully can understand what they are traveling for because it's hard to be straighter than a plum line. So I'm looking forward, forward to stand by what they say they believe. Thank you.
All right.
And where you going?
My name is Parkton Davis Junior. I live at thirteen sixty-seven South. I'm here, and this is a warning. I'm here, contracts, land banks, and past, I know councilmen are new. But there's a lot of y'all that went to jail in the past, messing around with this land bank, contracts. It's a history, and it's very dangerous. I keep telling y'all last time I wasn't coming back. Tell y'all again about the F P I, watching everything. So, any you councilmen, just wind up in contracts, land banks, better pay attention. I ain't coming back no more. This is last night. But I don't, there's a lot of things going on that ain't right. These people ain't blind. Like old man said, there's rules and we have to go by the rules. You know, so, you know, I'm not against none of y'all. I'm for all of y'all. Library, the school, everything. I'm, I'm on y'all's side. But we gotta help each other, you know? Don't come around saying you wasn't told. That's it.
Thank you.
How you doing?
Hi.
My name is Bishop Orlando H. Williams of the Tabernacle Prayer Church on one sixty-three hundred Euclid Avenue. I had a chance to talk to the clear crime council, uh, lady Townsend. And, uh, I want to get an appointment with the mayor, but she was telling me about the meeting today, and I wanted to make it my business to be here to, uh, put my claim out. It's the potholes. The potholes is ridiculous. I, I mean, it's just totally ridiculous. Uh, right there on Hillboro is where our church is at. And those roads have been like that for at least the last three years, not the big storm that we just had, but the last three years, and that's just ridiculous. And I'm sure that everybody, at one time done drove past there, and you see what we're dealing with. I mean, that shouldn't be, you know, that shouldn't be. I, I think that should be, uh, a prime target to look at and deal with it. Not here blaming nobody, but just wanna put it on the table that we can get this taken care of. I towed my car, you know, I drive a Benz, and the reason why I say I drive a Benz is because my windshield cracked it over a thousand dollars and bust my tire at the same time. So, you know, I mean, this is just ridiculous. It, it shouldn't be, and it don't have to be. So I would appreciate it very much if, uh, someone would really take attention to what we need done over there. You know, and, uh, I'll be back at the next meeting if anything happens. I will be back, you know?
Bring more people.
Something can't be done. These red light, these, uh, lights that's, uh, getting all this money, I don't take so much money for them lights. Them lights done got me several, and, and I pay the money. I don't B R and I just pay the money. You know, I've paid enough money for them holes to be taken care of. So I think we should just, you know, consider the residents, the people, and let's just do something. We shouldn't have to go through another one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Bishop of all we. How you doing? Hi, Councilman Townsend, Vice President of the Council of the Board of Mayor, Member of the Board.
East Cleveland is a very good neighborhood community, y'all. And throughout the year, my name is Fomita Gaudi, and I'm eighteen fifty-seven, nine, so. Throughout the years, I have seen it tear-rating. And we want to be so anxious of giving out stuff, but not putting nothing back in. And this is sad because when we give out stuff, that's still gonna be the responsibility of East Cleveland if they don't keep it up. And I see that, uh, a lot of people wanna give out stuff, and I wanna know why they wanna give it out and who they giving it to, because we here a lot like the house. And you see that beautiful house over here on, um, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars? Right here, off, right here off of, uh, by the school, before you hit the school. Chambers here. That beautiful house that they just built. And I guess y'all know because it should be on record. I'm talking about that house is sitting right there for somebody to sell, to buy, and everything else. And I'm saying, if, if we don't get our house in order, that house is gonna go way down for how much they going for. And we all know this system, because if you ain't gonna buy it quick enough, it gonna go down. The prices gonna go down. We saying that all the houses and stuff should be beautiful. We had a program. And, and I don't know about the houses program and stuff like that. People still asking about the housing program. Do they still exist, or is it out the window too? We, I mean, we need to get together as a community. And I, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to even, you know, humble myself even with the attitude of some of the councils and stuff we having, but I will work with you. I will humble myself. Because a lot of people got a lot of houses, but they need a lot of fixing up. And they don't wanna sell their houses, but they having a hard time of getting money. And it's like, that one good house can ruin. I mean, the, the rest of the houses can ruin that one good house on that street. Because it look like that house standing out, and it's facing the street. They should come by. It's right on the back park. If you ride past, of course, you'll keep on going across up the Little Fathers, close by those apartment buildings, keep on coming. And, um, it's just a beautiful place. And that house is so expensive that whoever buying, who gonna buy the house might not even buy. And, um, it's just a beautiful place, and that house is so expensive, that whoever buying, who gonna buy the house might not even buy it, they gonna wait until it go down, the sale go down. Because that's how, uh, the houses is, right beside it, the sale is going to go down, because ain't nothing else gonna, you know, outstanding that house. So we looking at people right now is waiting for the sale go down.
Ms. Gowdy, your time is open, I appreciate that.
So I just want you to know that I, I'm not trying to keep up the time, but even to hear.
Ms. Gowdy. Please take your remarks, that's my end.
I am Japhom Goodrum, nineteen oh seven Rosemont, uh, the address nineteen oh three Rosemont. It's an abandoned house, um, and the weeds are so high, you can kill somebody and throw, and throw body bags, and nobody will ever know it. But I'm also here to talk about Superior Elementary School.
Yes.
The address is eighteen sixty-five Garnfield, it's a one-way, come up there, the roads are terrible, holes real big like this. Since the mayor and your children were there, we didn't have a problem with that street, now that your children are gone, the last few years, it's terrible. Buses have tires, have, have the tires messed up, cars. Come up there and see, the, you have to drive like two miles, on tippy-toe, just to go, so your tires won't get messed up. And all the teachers, we have to go there every day, because their parents picking up the kids, everybody has to go there, and it's terrible, and something needs to be done about that. Like I said, when your children were there at Superior, you didn't have a problem, now that they out of there, we have a whole kind of, we can't get no help. So that's why I'm here today, and I told the teachers, my principal, I'm coming to council meeting tonight so that I can address this. Because nobody has money to keep on buying tires over and over, fixing stuff. So don't take my word for it, come up there yourself and see how devastating it is.
It is. It's terrible.
Drill Pro one four zero one nine, North Hill. Uh, on that land bank list that everybody's talking about, I got the land bank list, today I tried to go around and find all those houses. The, a house, I was talking to you about, this land bank list, that house that we're trying to vote in as emergencies, not on the land bank list. See, there's the house that was, we were, we had a problem with. So that, that drove me to come up here to the City Hall to ask why these houses aren't on that list. And then it just appeared, just seems like to me, that there is another list of properties that's missing. Because that's, that, that, that house that Ms. Woods is trying to purchase, nice house, it's not a piece of junk, it's a nice house. And, and we saw the value of the house, so I was wondering, where is, I guess my question right now, which I'm putting out, and will be on four-four-one-one-two news, which I'm taking for right now, is where is that other list of properties that, that's being sold, has been sold? And I went back to a lot of people, to ask them, where could that possibly be, and what are they doing? But it appears there are two lists, and I guess we're trying to find out where the other list is. Where are we, where, where are these people finding these hot properties, where you can buy them for a hundred and fifty dollars, a hun- a hundred and fifty dollars for property? And that property that you're voting on is a beaut- beautiful property, I just want to know where the other list is. Because we gotta get on a gravy train, people of East Cleveland gotta get on that gravy train.
Reminds well.
And I just want to know if it's, if it's the land people, if they're doing it, they have a list, we just want to know where it is. I'm not asking for a whole lot at this point, just give us a list, I used, I used to say, show me the money. Now, the new thing I'll put on my T-shirt is gonna be, show me the list, because I want to get on that gravy train. Hundred and fifty dollars for a house, phew!
Yes, I know.
Thank you very much, is that the, um, did more responses, um, for residents? Hearing that, we will, uh, move on to the next item of the agenda, the sponsor council and the mayor to the remarks to the public. Since, um, the mayor is here, um, I'm going to ask the mayor if he would do the honor of responding to the residents here in the audience. And to the potholes, what can be done, when they're going to be done, and give them an answer. Um, and as far as Mr. Townsend, that hole on Superior, you can go in there and you won't get out. But, uh, it has been filled once, so, but yes, that big hole has been filled once, and apparently it was, um, not a good product. Okay, so, Mayor, you have the floor.
To this guard here from Gard, uh, we will certainly have our support as we can, I would say that by the end of next week, uh, you should see some attention to that street. And, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
And for the calls that were made to the service department, and I wish that I was able to get every message that was left, because I certainly would have picked up on that. But quite frankly, tonight was the first I've heard of your experience and, and trying to call all those times. So I certainly wish that we had a better system in place, but we don't. So now that I'm aware, uh, we do our best to get some resources out there. Um, and potholes in general are, are a challenge, uh, we certainly will address those which we can. Quite frankly, there are some streets, uh, some situations where, where all the patching in the world does not make a difference for more than a couple of weeks. Uh, so we, we look at those on a case-by-case basis. Uh, for the, the hole on Superior that's as big as this speaker, uh, much like the system that, that is lacking, where I know about every call and every message that's left, I don't know about every pothole. Uh, so, so thank you for letting me know about it, I, I have not seen it, and I, I probably should have seen it by now, but, uh, certainly have not. So please indulge that, and we'll, we'll do our best to, uh, to get some attention paid for it. As for the gentleman who busted a tire and a windshield, that must have been a heck of a pothole, I've never heard of a pothole busting windshield. Uh, but if you say it happened, I, I have no reason to argue. Uh, so again, you know, potholes are, are a difficult thing, but I can only imagine that it must have been pretty deep to reach all the way into a windshield and crack.
It's still there, it's, it's several, not just one, Mayor.
Uh, and, and I think a lot of you know what I'm saying in terms of, uh, potholes, I mean, I know potholes are bad, I've never seen a pothole crack a windshield. Uh, so, so you're more than welcome to present the claim for the windshield to the law department, and our legal investigators will look into it, and, uh, you know, there's a pothole that can crack a windshield, and that's certainly worthy of repair. There are other situations, uh, some things are just not well-suited for public discourse. Uh, anyone who brings up my children, uh, anything that I would do either because of, or not because of them, that's just not a great thing to do. I'd never go around anyone's house talking about, talking about their children. So I'd appreciate it if, uh, if, you know, you wouldn't tie my children's presence or absence to the availability of city services, I appreciate that, just as a common human courtesy.
You got that, but what are you gonna do about it?
Yeah, you didn't comment on it.
He's answering the question, later on, you can ask him what the resolution is still. Are you through, answering?
He didn't answer the question that we gave him. He didn't, he talked to all them, but he didn't talk to us.
Your question was about the, we talking about the street over there, um,
The school.
The school, yes.
And it's terrible, that's, that need to be urgent, for those children over there. And some children have to walk home on that, that's urgent call, that's a nine-one-one, we need to be over there immediately.
Ms. Gowdy, uh, as soon as the meeting is over, you can address that with the mayor outside, all right? Okay. Um, we will now hear from, um, the council, Mr. Mayor, just the only remark that you're going to answer. Um, uh, Councilor King, uh, you have anything to address to these individuals here in Florence?
Think the mayor did a pretty good job, I have nothing to add to that.
Uh, Mr. Martin?
Yes, I rise to speak, and I'll be brief. All government is about process and procedure, these rules are put in place for a reason. And it's our responsibility as your elected officials to follow the rules unless those rules change. I'm not opposed to anyone getting property, but they have to go through the proper process, okay? That's it. Uh, Bishop Orlando. It's funny that you brought that up, I rode past there about an hour ago, I tiptoed past there, it's so bad. I tiptoed past there, I started on one side of the street, the police, they probably would have gave me a ticket, because I couldn't go, it was so bad. I mean, it's between Hughesboro and Bellwood.